Good evening, Chair. Calls to order legislative session day 23-022. I would ask you to stand with us for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilman Riley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please back your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our county. I pray that you will guide our council as they meet and discuss matters with regard to our county. I pray that their motivation and everything they want to do is for good of the public and not their own. I pray that we'll be able to solve our county's problems and make good policies that address them. Help us to be competent in excellence in our governance. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint and give us a spirit of service, as in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Riley. If I can, real quick, I want to welcome you all to your chambers this evening. I want to thank you for, ahead of time, for being respectful of each other in this chamber, respectful of the council members. And again, we've been on a little bit of a break as far as legislative sessions, but we have been working every day on your behalf. And with that, agenda item number four, presentation of proclamations. Councilman Pemben, if you'd like to stand down as well.
Coach? You want to bring your kids up, too?
Absolutely. You bring everyone up. Gentlemen, ladies. Deion. Coach, I just want to congratulate you. What an amazing achievement for you as a coach and the players and the sacrifice that you guys have done to win this championship. And I also want to thank the parents. I know it's not easy to get those players to the games and the resources that are needed. So, and Boston community, wouldn't be possible without the Boston Rec Association. So, congratulations to you. We do have this proclamation that reads, "For their outstanding achievement at the Cooperstown Dream Park in Cooperstown, New York, we commend the team and coaches for their dedication and hard work that led them to become the first Harford County team to win the championship in its 27-year history with a flawless 10-0 record."
It's very, it's very nice to be recognized. The boys did an incredible job. It's a, it's, you stay in a barracks for six days altogether, bunk beds, no air conditioning. So, but it was, it was an incredible bonding experience and I think we learned a lot about each other on the field and they really worked hard to get there. So, I've said since then, it was really no accident that we did so well because they worked really hard.
Can I actually have you all in the front step this way a little bit, please? Yep, that's good, right there. And then you on the end step it just a little bit. Yep, there you go.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Good. You want to bring them in now? Scott. Turn his mics on. to come in, those of you who have not been in our chambers before, I just want to kind of give a little ground rule. As I say, I want you all to be respectful of each other. There will be no applauding, no yelling out. So, when it comes to public comment, depending on how many speakers we have, we typically give each three minutes. We will not be able to speak to any of the legislation that is active tonight as far as being introduced. So, and please, cell phones, shut those off if you can, please. Let's go ahead and continue. Agenda item number five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Council appointment, Audit Advisory Board may have a motion, please.
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of Kimberly Bauer Weeks.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pemben. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointment of Ms. Weeks. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Executive appointments, directors, deputy directors, council. If there are no objections, I'd like to move the following appointments together. May I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve the appointments of Roz Gold, Deputy Director of Economic Development, Barbara Richardson, Director of Housing and Community Services, Susan Affleck Bauer, Deputy Director of Housing and Community Services, Kevin Greenwall, Deputy Director of Housing and Community Services, Karen Myers, Director of Department of Procurement, and Marcus Williamson, Deputy Director of Procurement.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Is there any discussion? I would recognize that a couple of these individuals are in the audience this evening and Mr. Jandredano? Oh, I thought you wanted to speak. Anyone? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Executive appointments, directors, deputy directors, council. If there are no objections, I'd like to move the following appointments together. May I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve the appointments of Roz Gold, Deputy Director of Economic Development, Barbara Richardson, Director of Housing and Community Services, Susan Affleck Bauer, Deputy Director of Housing and Community Services, Kevin Greenwall, Deputy Director of Housing and Community Services, Karen Myers, Director of Department of Procurement, and Marcus Williamson, Deputy Director of Procurement.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Is there any discussion? I would recognize that a couple of these individuals are in the audience this evening and Mr. Jandredano? Oh, I thought you wanted to speak. Anyone? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
So, there's seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative. I would ask those individuals that are here with us tonight to please stand and be recognized. Thank you, thank you for your service to the citizens. Department of Social Services Advisory Board may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the new appointments of Dee Galloway and Vicki Jones.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointments of Ms. Galloway and Ms. Jones. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Seven votes in the affirmative and zero in a negative. The appointments are hereby approved. Agenda number six, special presentations. We Can Serve. It's a group that is very familiar to this council. I want to welcome Zachary V. Azda?
V. Azda.
V. Azda, Chair of We Can Serve. Please come forward, sir, with your board members. Absolutely, yes.
Who would you like to have?
Right up front, right in the hot seat.
Yes, and sit in.
So, Zachary, bring us up to date.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, guys, for the inviting remarks from We Can Serve Movement. It's an honor to be here with all of you.
Zach, can you pull those mics in, please?
Just one.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for inviting remarks from the We Can Serve Movement. It's an honor to be here with all of you and some of the board members of the All Youth Board of Advisors for We Can Serve. We have Gloria and Sidney here. I'm Zachary V. Azda, the Chair of the Board of Advisors for We Can Serve. And We Can Serve brings swift solutions to children in need because we believe happiness shouldn't have to wait. Our organization was founded in 2012 by Grace Callwood shortly after she was diagnosed with stage IV cancer at the age of seven. She quickly realized she could bring happiness to children who find themselves in sad situations that are not their fault. Our team of advisors, who are all between the ages of eight and 18, brainstorm, plan, and execute our projects and initiatives to bring happiness to children experiencing homelessness, fighting catastrophic illnesses, and who are in the foster care group homes or orphanages. We also extend our services on a case-by-case basis to children fighting food insecurity and children whose family lives severely below the poverty line. For the past 11 years, our organization has served more than 26,000 children in Hartford, Cecil, and Baltimore Counties, Baltimore City, and in Ohio, Delaware, and three countries in Africa. Some of our programs have included Camp Happy, a free summer enrichment day camp for children experiencing homelessness that we started in 2015, La Magnifique Boutique, which we opened at Arrow Crossroads in Bel-Air for teen girls in the foster care group home, Threads of Hope Closet, which is based at Hall's Crossroad Elementary to support families in that community, and Brunch Bags, which is an extension of a program we created in 2016 to address food insecurity. This initiative provides food bags to HCPS personnel for children facing food insecurity. We have delivered activity kits, including extra special Easter bag kits, beach-in-a-bucket kits, and comic book making kits to more than 4,000 children at nine hospitals, including the Children's Hospital at Sinai, Johns Hopkins Hospital, Walter Reed National Military Medical Center, and we have provided much-needed items, including more than 5,200 pairs of socks and more than 2,700 toiletry kits to 10 homeless shelters, and transitional programs, including the Eastside Family Emergency Shelter in Rosedale, Anna's House in Bel-Air, three foster care group homes and three orphanages, including the Children's Home in Catonsville, and St. Aloesha Orphanage in Cincinnati, and domestic violence safe houses in Bel-Air and Dundalk. Since 2020, we have worked with Anna's House on our Spork Initiative, which is, We Can Serve provides packaged boxes of fresh ingredients similar to Blue Apron or HelloFresh for families living at the facility. Spork has evolved into our newest project, On the Move with We Can Serve, which is an educational TV show that premiered on Hartford TV on September 1st. The show addresses topics such as homelessness, anti-hunger advocacy, unaccompanied minors, and critical illness, and how We Can Serve's All Youth Board of Advisors creates projects and initiatives to address these issues. Each episode will include a youth-led sport cooking tutorial. For example, in the recent episode Gloria did it here, which shows how to make the healthy meals that are packaged and donated to families at Anna's House. Our goal in this show is to show the community what the youth are doing in the community to make a difference. When I first became involved with We Can Serve in early 2022, I quickly learned how a group of committed youth can make a big impact on the community. We welcomed an all-new youth board in June, and each of us is inspired by Grace, our founder, and the children's and families that we serve. I am excited to be a part of an organization that recognizes that even though I'm only a 15-year-old high school student, my thoughts, skills, and leadership experiences have value. Part of We Can Serve's success is due to the support we get from our local Hartford County community, and we encourage you to learn more about We Can Serve and the ways that you can help us meet the needs of local childrens and families. If you want to learn more about how We Can Serve is helping the community, make sure to tune into On the Move with We Can Serve on Hartford TV or the Hartford TV VOD page. Thank you again for having us tonight.
Zach, you guys are amazing.
Thank you.
Ho, ho, ho. Back in the hot seat. Several of my colleagues have not had a chance to meet you or to know anything about your organization, so I would like them the opportunity to be able to ask a few questions.
All right.
Can you handle that?
Yes, I can.
Mr. Jandredano?
Zach, good evening. Thank you for coming. And it sounds like you guys are doing an amazing job, but how do you guys get your funding and how can people help you guys into accomplishing your goals? What is it that you need from the citizens or from businesses? Are you a 501(c)(3), which I'm probably sure you are? But if you can tell me a little bit more and that information there, I'm sure you're going to give to Mila so that she can pass that on to us and we can, and do that. So, give me a little briefing of how you guys get your funding. Where does it come from and what are you looking for?
So, yes, we do have a 501(c)(3) and most of our donations, we rely on sponsors for some of our events, like our comic book stuffing event, which we had a few months ago. We had a sponsor for that, which is how we got all the funding for the supplies at that event. And that's what we heavily rely on for most of our events. But we also have, we've had community donations, and one of the big things is to, one of our, we have a fund at Sinai Hospital to directly help the children there, which we actually have a GoFundMe that anyone can donate to, and we also have a ray of candles that anyone can buy and proceeds will go to Sinai.
All right. So, what's your next event?
Our next event, I believe we have some, I need to think about this. I have so much that I have to. Yeah, so we, in November, the one I remember right now, November, we have an event at the Avondale Library to make Thanksgiving, like, bags that will be donated to, I'm pretty sure, some of the area hospitals. We're also in October doing a dental hygiene drive, so we're going to set up some boxes in a few schools and a, something called Socktober, which we've actually had Hartford County support before, which is, we have the community donate socks, and then those socks will go to the area homes and people in the county that need them. So, that's something that's going to be going on in October.
Okay. So, November, you have something for Thanksgiving, right?
Yes.
Make sure you get me that information. I'm going to donate to you guys, okay?
All right. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
So, I had the honor and pleasure to attend with Grace and her family and her board members at Sinai when they made their first presentation. And I'm thinking that was, what, 2015, 16?
16.
16, yeah. And it's just amazing. Grace, I guess, is at school?
Yes.
And that's why she's not with us tonight. She just graduated and is at college. So, it's amazing. Anyone else? Any, Councilman Guthrie? Zach, I'm very impressively young. How old are you?
I'm 15.
You're 15?
Yep.
Introduce your two colleagues.
So, this is Gloria here. You can.
I am a 12-year-old girl that goes to Patterson Mill.
And then we have Sidney here.
I'm Sidney. I'm 11 years old and I get at Bel Air Middle School.
So, both of them are very engaged in We Can Serve and excited on everything we're doing.
Next time you appoint board members, get them younger, will you? Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
You know, I just think what you're doing is awesome and amazing. You know, I work with young people every day in my role as a school teacher, and what you're doing is really special, and it makes me think of a gentleman in half-decent grace, Mr. Osman, who, with his high schoolers, over 40 years ago, started the Smiles Program to help people in the community. And there's former high schoolers who worked with Mr. Osman, who are in their 60s and 70s now, who still, every Thanksgiving, cook Thanksgiving dinner for the community and have been doing it with him for 50-plus years. So, I just hope you know that what you're doing right now is something beyond a sport, beyond a club, but it's a lifelong commitment to helping others, and it's a really special gift to have that in your life so young. So, just thank you so much.
Thank you, yes.
Mom, do you want to add anything?
I'm just proud.
Councilman Pemben?
I just want to echo everything that was said here. Congratulate you and your team. What an amazing program that you have. I understand how important outreach is in giving back to the community and helping the community. So, thank you again for your team and your presentation.
Thank you.
And if there's no one else with any comments, Zach, if I may, would the three of you come to the center of this dais? All of us, let's go down on the floor. We'll get a picture. Yes.
Get out behind me.
I don't like to be my card, so you make sure you send me that information so that I can donate.
You get right here in the center. You just get right to the best of your.
Don't do a high. Three, I'm on my side. Three, I'm on my side.
Yeah, I have to squish. Get a little closer. My mom say, act like you like each other. Get in there.
One, two, three, right at me.
Great job.
Public hearing, June 20, 2023, legislative day 23-021, June 20, 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes? The minutes are approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. We have none. Nine, introduction of bills. Councilman Jandredano, please read in bills 026, 027, and 028 into the record.
Bill 23-026, Amendments to Zoning Code, Section 267-4, 267, 60, 267-126, Warehouse, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. An act to add to definitions of distribution and local delivery sector, freight terminal, and warehousing to Section 267-4. Definitions of Article 1, general provisions of Part 1 standard, that's Section 267-60, C.I., L.I., and G.I. industrial districts of Article 7. District regulations by amending the purpose of the light industrial district and a general industrial district in subsection A as amended and by adding additional general regulations in subsection C, parentheses 4, dash, parentheses 7, as amended, and to repeal and reenact with amendments, subsection B, parentheses 3, non-residential development of Section 267-126. Adequate public facilities of Article 25, Growth Management of Part 2, Miscellaneous.
15.
Article 15, Growth Management of Part 2, Miscellaneous, all of Chapter 267. Zoning to clarify the public facility requirements that must be satisfied before issuance of permits and approvals and by repealing and reenacting with amendments permitted use charts 19, semicolon, 20, and 19, semicolon, colon, 21, by amending permitted use charts attachments 19, colon, 20. The freight terminal, Row, by deleting freight terminal as permitted use in the B3 and L.I. districts and by amending permitted use chart attachment 19, colon, 21, by deleting warehousing and wholesaling, processing and distribution, and local delivery as permitted use category by adding a new permitted use category, warehousing, distribution, and local delivery, less than or equal to 150,000 square feet and permitted, permitting such uses in the village business, VB, comma, Business General, dash, B3, comma, Commercial Industrial, CI, comma, Light Industrial, LI, and General Industrial, GI, use districts, and by adding a new permitted use category, warehousing, distribution, and local delivery, greater than 150,000 square feet and less than or equal to 250,000 square feet, that shall be permitted only in C.I., L.I., and G.I. use districts and only pursuant to the special condition in section 267-60C, parentheses 4, parentheses A, parentheses 4, in addition to all other applicable conditions under Chapter 267. Zoning is amended, comma, all to read as follows, and generally relating to zoning. Public hearing is scheduled for Monday, October 2nd at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers. Bill 23-027, Apartments, B3, General Business District, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. An act to repeal, repeal and reenact with amendments, Section 267-74, Garden and Mid-Rise Apartment Dwellings, GMA, parentheses, of Article 7, Design Standards for Special Developments and Section 8. Article 8, Design Standards for Special Developments and Section 267-88. Specific standards, subsection F, residential use of Article 9, special exceptions, and the permitted use chart under Section 267-50 to remove garden apartments, mid-rise apartments, and high-rise apartments as permitted use in the B3 General Business District unless appropriately integrated into a plan for mixed-use development as permitted pursuant to Section 267-76, and to repeal and reenact with amendments, Design Requirements, Table 59-3, to eliminate the Row labeled apartments from the table. All such amendments being related to the development of apartments within the B3 General Business District and may to generally prohibit the development of apartments within B3 General Business District unless being undertaken pursuant to an approved mixed-use development plan, all as generally relating to zoning. Public hearing is scheduled for Monday, October 2nd at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers. Bill 23-28, Charter Amendment Term Limits, introduced by Council Vice President Jandredano, Council Members Riley and Deion and Guthrie. An act to approve an amendment to Article 2, legislative branch of the Hartford County Charter, as amended by repealing and reenacting with amendments, Section 206, term of council members to provide for term limits for county council members and to require the submission of this amendment to the legally qualified voters of Hartford County for their adoption or rejection in accordance with Section 905 of the Hartford County Charter. Public hearing is scheduled for Monday, October 2nd at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Jandredano. Agenda item number 10, introduction and consideration of amendments. We have none. Call for final reading of bills. We have none. Enrollment of bills, none. Thirteen unfinished business, we have none. Fourteen, executive request, extension of settlements for agriculture land preservation program. Mr. Amos, did I see you come in the room? Are you prepared to say a few words? Come forward, please. I know you and I have talked. I'm not sure if other council members had the opportunity or not, but if you could explain the need for the extension?
Sure. From time to time, we always, as you know, always push hard to complete the settlements that you have approved through our county ag land preservation program. However, many of these deals that we approved, the 12 farms, several of them are erasing lots and putting the rest of the farm in the program, including those once used to be a lot. It just takes time to go through the subdivision process. It just takes time to go through the subdivision process, de-subdivision, I should say, and then submit a boundary survey. So it's taken longer than typical. We push as hard as we can, as you know, but we just need this extension, and that will take us to mid-December of this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for me?
Council, anyone? And this is something we've done in the past.
Yes, yes, we have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Council executive, I move to extension of settlements for agricultural land preservation program.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved a second to approve the request for an extension of settlement. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Will Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Seven votes in the affirmative, zero on the negative. The executive request for extension of settlements is approved. Thank you, Mr. Amos.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. With that, we're going to move right into comments and input from attending citizens, which is agenda number seventeen. And again, I'm going to stress that we have, I believe, twenty-seven speakers or more right now. I am going to stick with the three minutes, but I am going to be very, very strict on what you speak about. I set a public hearing on a separate night so that we would have all night, if needed, to discuss these three bills. So tonight, I'm asking you, please, not to stretch into these pieces of legislation because if you do, I'm going to stop you, and I don't want to do that. So, Ms. Dixon, if you're ready, call your first speaker.
Mr. President, we have twenty-four speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Diana Sidowski, followed by Deborah Schreiber.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address for the record, please.
Diana Sidowski, eleven thirteen Stromco Drive, Fallston, Maryland. We can stand here and complain about horrible traffic, increased crime, overcrowding of schools, and destruction of wetlands, strains on the hospital and emergency services, but if I and the rest of us stay silent and we don't vote in representatives who have our backs and have our quality of life and interest at the forefront, we all might as well move away. I personally will not move away from this beautiful county and will be a voice for her and her preservation for future generations. Harford County's appeal has always been won because it's rural. Our county's natural progression should be consistent with maintaining that rural nature, not be made to adapt to the wants of man and calling it progress. I've mentioned before, this committee before, that county roads should not become city streets or highways as they don't have a natural place here. News alert, we're experiencing a late summer heat wave. How about we plant more trees instead of more buildings? Science states that trees have a natural cooling and cleaning effect on the environment. Score one for trees, zero for buildings. In light of the obvious overdevelopment that's happening here in Harford County, I bet many constituents are wrestling with voter's remorse. There's a feeling that's become palpable that local representation is lacking. There's more focus on an agenda of term limits, malaligning, the county executive again and again on local news, rather than preserving this beautiful county and a gem of a community that we live in. Here's a quote that's been thrown out to me. Quote, "It's nearly impossible to build true urban sprawl in Harford County." Mr. Penman, that's your quote. From my viewpoint, my viewpoint, I'm sure many others, it sure looks like it's happening. Because of overdevelopment, our beautiful county is turning into a cheap piece of costume jewelry, all in the name of progress. If this is progress, we don't want it. You know, it's customary that one talks the talk and he or she walks the walk. That isn't happening. So you need to check your figures and can responses to placate those who show up at meetings or emails, send emails. We may not be part of the powers that be, but we're not stupid. I feel that my representation does not hear the many small voices of the constituents. However, on a summer Friday in Fallston, the many small voices became a sounding roar of where our community and county needs to go. Yes, I'm disappointed, and I and others will not be silenced. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Hi, Debbie Schreiber, eleven fourteen Stromco Drive, Fallston, Maryland. Thank you, council members and Mr. Vincenti, for allowing us the opportunity to speak this evening. All right. Everything tells me that. Is this better? I wanted to congratulate the Fallston boys. Go Cougars. I've been a resident of Fallston for forty-five years. There are folks in this room that I met just a few weeks ago, and there's others that I've known twenty, thirty, forty years. I raised my boys in Fallston, and now they live in a few, they live a few minutes away. And my grandchildren will attend the same schools. I volunteered at the old youth benefit, worked with great parents at the Fallston Middle School Youth Center, and was a member of the Fallston High P T S A. And I would wager that most of the parents in here volunteered for our community as well. I guess the point I'm making is that Fallston is not just a place, but a strong, loyal community, and that we will continue to support her and stand together. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bert Dixon, followed by Ronald Asp.
Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
My name is, I go by Tom, so Bert Dixon is my official name. I go by Tom. One zero zero five Stromco Drive in Fallston. So my concern that I bring to you is very similar to what you've heard from many people here today, which is just overdevelopment of this beautiful county. I have lived here for twenty-three years, so I consider myself a newcomer compared to many of the people that have lived here their entire lives. But what I did see, when I was young, growing up in Perry Hall, was the rampant, destructive overdevelopment of what was once a beautiful community. As a matter of fact, what Perry Hall used to be is what places like Fallston and other areas are now. But I watched, year after year, as the roads got wider, the buildings went up, the people moved in, the quality of life went down and down and down. And I had the opportunity to move to Fallston, Maryland, and I felt like I had moved to heaven. I honestly did. The community was close. There were amenities for my family, for my children. I even recall there was an article in the Sun Paper, Sun Paper, several years ago that said, "Fallston, the hidden gem, the best-kept secret." And for the first several years, I thought it was a wonderful thing, but as time went by, my life started to get a little more difficult. The commute got longer, the schools got more crowded. Things were just not as pleasant as they used to be. I could hear cars and traffic in places that there used to not be. Like so many people in Fallston, I'm a volunteer. I also work as a substitute teacher in the Fallston schools. I have had kindergarten classes where I had well over thirty little kids. Can you imagine me, an older guy, trying to control thirty-five little kids running around the room? That was just way too many. And the message that I'm trying to get off was that room was just much too crowded. The commute from ninety-five to my home used to take ten minutes. Sometimes it took forty minutes in more recent years. Forty minutes to come down one fifty-two. This is not a good quality of life. This is the way the county is changing right before our eyes. So all I want to do is I want to appeal to you, the elected representatives that are here representing the people in this room, to hearken to the words of Councilman Riley's prayer, that you are here to serve the betterment of all the citizens of Harford County. Not the few, but all of us. We depend on you. We look to you for this leadership, and we hope that you actually can do that and lead Harford County into a place that we can be proud of and you can be proud of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Ms. Dixon, are we having problems with our live feed?
I'm aware of.
Okay.
And as far as I know, there's no connection between Mrs. Dixon and Mr. Dixon whatsoever.
Good evening, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Roland Asp, and I live on Nine Poplar Grove Avenue in Perryman. Thank you, everybody, for giving me this opportunity. I didn't actually know I was going to speak until I walked into this room, so I don't have anything prepared. But I have, actually, really what I want to do is ask all of you guys, the county council, for help. I'm going to tell you a quick story. A couple Saturdays ago, my eleven-year-old nephew was in my home in Perryman, and he had a medical emergency. He had seizures. I called nine-one-one, and I want to say that the E M Ts, the emergency service, did a wonderful job, and I'm really, really grateful. However, I called nine-one-one, and it took over forty-five minutes for them to come to my house. And I actually called nine-one-one three times, seeing where they are. Now, again, the services I got was wonderful, but it was delayed, and that was unacceptable. I have a daughter at home with extremely serious medical conditions. I would be, actually, I would be shocked if I did not have to call nine-one-one for my daughter in the next couple months. And I promise you, she does not have twenty minutes, thirty minutes, forty minutes to wait for emergency services. It's a problem right now. And as you can see with my teal hat, I think you know my stance on development of Perryman. But I do want to say, if any major development happens in the Perryman Peninsula or anywhere, that is going to impact emergency services. And not for the better, not for the better. So I really do urge all of you to think about my daughter, think about my niece, think of all of us who live in Perryman, and the services that we are entitled to. I can't wait forty minutes for the ambulance to come. And if a major development happens and there is another emergency, what is that, forty minutes going to become an hour? That is unacceptable. Now, one, I will say that I'm opposed to the development of Perryman, but I would love for you guys to look at the fire code. NFPA One is the fire code that Maryland has adopted. And chapter fifteen, nobody reads. But chapter fifteen is called Fire Department Service Concurrent Evaluations. Please look at that. What it really says is, any major development that's going to be proposed, it's got to be studied and make sure that the emergency services, whether it's fire, emergency services, ambulances, is not adversely affected. And if it is, how do we fix that? And if we have to fix that, how is that paid for? And all that should be done before any development is even, you know, started or approved. So please look at that. That's not an automatic thing. That has to be asked for by the authorities having jurisdictions, which are you guys. So please help me, help my daughter, help us. Thank you very much.
What was the date of your call?
My date of my call was either two or three Saturdays ago. I have to look that up.
Mr. Richardson, you got that? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Janine Lacor, followed by Sarah Woodring.
Name an address, please.
Good evening. Janine Lacor, eighteen twenty, Park Beach Drive in Perryman. And tonight, I just wanted to touch base. I think we have an opportunity as a county for coordination of effort. And obviously, we've got lots of concerns in Perryman. And one of the things I'm just wondering about is how development is coordinated between the county as well as local jurisdiction. So, for example, in Aberdeen, our roads are already unsafe, the infrastructure's inadequate. But yet, the town of Aberdeen is talking about adding to an existing roundabout that is really inadequate, and that's on Old Philadelphia Road. And there's talk about putting a Rutter's truck stop, which is only going to add more to that failing roundabout. So I would really like to ask that the county council look at that and have more outreach with the surrounding towns, because those are the parts that impact everything that's happening to Perryman. It's not just within the peninsula, it's everything that's feeding in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, Ms. Dixon.
Sarah Woodring.
Yep.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Hello. My name is Sarah Woodring, and I live at five-three-zero Stratford Road. Thank you, everyone. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about my story. We specifically moved here to Fallston two years ago to escape the overcrowding of Perry Hall. Hi, Tom. But we're newbies. Just from two years ago, I grew up in Perry Hall and that area and witnessed the purchasing of land behind seven courts turned from farms and open areas to development projects. It was not pleasant, but my parents had no choice and could not afford to move. So upon getting married, my husband and I decided to remain in Perry Hall. But after ten more years, we realized that it was no longer meeting our vision for our kids. Schools were overcrowded and neighborhoods were changing. Unfortunately, we were only one block away from Amy Shapiro's incident, which kind of drastically changed the vibes of that neighborhood in which so much I loved and I grew up in. So we made the tough decision to move to Harford County to escape the overcrowding. We looked for an area with good schools, green space, and had hopes that our newly-elected councilmen would listen to us. We moved into the Woodcrest neighborhood, and now we're seeing overdevelopment all over again here. I'm so disappointed. As a nurse in the community, I've learned that Harford Memorial will be closing next spring. It's the one of two hospitals in Harford County. The hospital has eighty-two inpatient beds. The Bel Air Bed Tower expansion at Upper Chesapeake has proposed it's only adding seventy-two beds. So that's about ten inpatient beds that we're going to lose. Not only has staffing been an issue at Upper Chesapeake, but we're losing our much-needed patient care space. Further development in this area without the infrastructure to support it will create major patient safety issues for the community. I'm extremely concerned. As a mother of two children in public school, I was astonished to find that my daughter is in one of nine kindergarten classes, and my son is in one of eight. The community needs better support and infrastructure to be a safe and healthy place to raise our families, period. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Malamo, followed by David Anderson.
Name an address, please.
Sir, I got delayed. There was a little bit of a traffic jam right there coming across Harford County. John P. Malamo, twenty-four oh two Eagleview Drive. Sir, I wonder, can we get a podium back here? It doesn't have to be quite as elegant as the last one, but something. When we left off, there were multiple answers on the zoning status of the Harford County Airport. Now I'm confused by the circumstances of these curious events. Let me review. The Har- Airport owners requested a special exception to operate a general aviation airport on eleven October, twenty thirteen. That request was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals on sixteen April, twenty fourteen. The hearing examiner's decision was adopted and ratified as its own by the Zoning Board of Appeals, sixteen September, twenty fourteen. Mr. Shane Grimm, at the DAC hearing on five November, twenty fourteen, declared the proposed airport expansion is subject to the conditions of Board of Appeals case fifty-eight fourteen. Mr. Milton D. Davenport, at that same hearing, stated the project was not a permitted use by right and was required to go through the county council and the Board of Appeals. They have issued a decision that the county is obligated to uphold. On fourteen April, twenty fifteen, at judicial review, Harford County Circuit Court judge affirmed the hearing examiner's decision. On one March, twenty seventeen, Mr. Milton Davenport, in a letter to the airport manager, which was attached to Mr. Killian's affidavit, stated that the airport was an existing legal non-conforming use. On sixteen March, twenty seventeen, Mr. Killian, then director of planning and zoning, in his sworn affidavit, averred Harford County Airport was granted a special exception to operate a general aviation airport and attaching the results of review conducted by his office on the zoning status of the Harford County Airport, Mr. Davenport's letter. On twenty April, twenty seventeen, the county law department stated that they agreed with the legal sufficiency of Mr. Davenport's letter. On twenty-two December, twenty seventeen, the county attorney stated that the airport owners had been granted a special exception. Now, can anyone explain how the same use on the same property at the same time be both a non-conforming use and a permitted use? Speak up. Does anybody know how the planning and zoning department could find that the Harford County Airport was operating as an illegal, non-conforming use? Or the law department agree with the legal sufficiency of that finding? In spite of the fact that both agencies considered the airport to be operating as a permitted the airport to be operating as a permitted use by special exception? Speak up. Well, get back to me then. Good night.
Call your next speaker, Ms. Dixon.
David Anderson, followed by Paul Filacci.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. It's David Anderson, thirty-nine North Hickory Avenue, Bel Air, Maryland. Again, good evening, everybody. I'm here to talk on a little bit different topic. I work for the town of Bel Air. I'm the media and publication specialist, and I represent the town on the Harford County Two-Fiftieth Anniversary Steering Committee. And so I'm just here tonight to speak about our ongoing project. It's called Piecing Together Hartford's History. This is a community-sourced, large-scale mosaic that will be installed at Bynum Run Park. It's a public art project depicting the history, personality, and culture of the county by incorporating material from the community into a piece of art for all to enjoy. And folks from all over the county can contribute really just a small piece of art, probably no bigger than about the size of your fist. It can be a pebble from your driveway, a broken plate from a past celebration, a lapel pin recognizing years of public service. The item does not need to be recognizable to anyone else. It just needs to symbolize your story. So what we have right now, we have a collection box, boxes at all of the Harford County library branches, so you can just go in during library hours, talk to the staff, and drop off your piece. The deadline to do this is October first, so the deadline is coming up. We would like to see a lot of community participation. Ahead of time, I did send these flyers to county council members, so I would just ask that you share this with your constituents. If anybody would like further information, you can visit the Harford Two-Fifty Celebration page on Facebook, and we would love to have as many people participate as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Paul Filacci, Perryman, Maryland. Three-twenty Marine Avenue, Perryman, Maryland. I want to talk about enterprise zones tonight. What are they, enterprise zones? What are they advertised to do by the Harford County government website? Number one, encourage creation of well-paying jobs. Two, ensure retention and spur expansion of resident businesses. Three, promote development and occupancy of vacant, underutilized land and buildings. Enterprise zones, what do they actually do? Spur temporary jobs for tax incentives and expose communities caught in or near the enterprise zones to higher levels of pollution, proximity to hazardous waste. Once the companies are out of the ten-year job creation qualification period, they tend to reduce employees or worse. To qualify for tax breaks, companies with any building located within enterprise zone only have to create five jobs that work thirty-five hours per week at eighteen-seventy-five an hour, but only half of those hours need to be actually worked in the enterprise zone. Here's a recent example. October sixth, two thousand and sixteen, XPO Logistics, a global supply chain solutions provider with more than fourteen-hundred locations worldwide, expanding into Harford County and plans to create up to four hundred new jobs, only got up to one-hundred-and-seventy-six jobs, of which fifty percent lived outside of Harford County, headquartered in Greenwich, Connecticut. Doesn't sound like a resident business. This summer, XPO Logistics Contract Business, called GXO, announced the layoff of one-hundred-and-seventy-six people and planned to close their business in Harford County's warehouse and distribution center on Chelsea Road. Based on the data from the twenty-twenty census provided on EPA environmental justice screening tool, three items that show enterprise zones have not helped Perryman continues to have the lowest income and highest unemployment in Harford County and the entire United States because of the overindustrialization caused by enterprise zones. Low income, sixty-seven percent of the U.S. has higher income than those that live in Perryman. Hazardous waste proximity, eighty-two percent of the U.S. has less exposure than Perryman. Unemployment, ninety-four percent of the U.S. has higher unemployed residents than Perryman. We are currently in a ten-year enterprise zone period for Aberdeen and Perryman that started in two thousand and six and lasts until two thousand and twenty-six. How many bus stops with appropriate shelter or at least a waiting area or a shelter on a road with no shoulder have been improved in Perryman since the enterprise zone was voted in two thousand and sixteen? Zero. How many sidewalks have been added to the roads in Perryman since two thousand and sixteen? Zero. How many pedestrian crosswalks have been added to the roads in Perryman since two thousand and sixteen? Zero. How many parks have been improved or added in Perryman since two thousand and sixteen through the open space park additions? Zero, since there are no park open space requirements for developments inside of an enterprise zone. Thus, enterprise zones give Harford County and the residents of Perryman more air, noise, traffic, pollution, more exposure to hazardous waste. Out-of-state businesses get tax breaks for out-of-county employees who only have to work half their thirty-five hours per week inside of the enterprise zone. Then when the ten-year window closes, Harford County gets the added gift of layoffs. In this type of program, we want our county council adding to new land like in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and nineteen for the benefit of developers building large buildings in Perryman.
Philacci, please bring your comments till close.
Time to drop these additions outside of the normal ten-year enterprise zone period.
Thank you.
Brendan Patton, followed by Kate Pervilsky.
Good evening, sir. Name and address.
Brendan Patton, twenty-fifty-four Park Beach Drive in Perryman. Fifty-three years here in Harford County, thirty-four years at Aberdeen Proving Ground. I've watched since the nineties how there's this culture by the elected officials that they feel the need to help developers. And I still just don't understand it. Your job as an elected official is to represent all these people here, not the developers, to improve our quality of life, not reduce it. That's your job. The tide is turning. Help us out, or we'll vote you out. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Kate Pervilsky. I live at twenty-two-seventeen Edinburgh Drive, Fallston. First, I want to thank those on the council who stand with the majority of citizens in Harford County who do not want to see our beautiful county overdeveloped. It's happening fast. We need to slow it down. We have reached a tipping point. I think many of us who lived here a long time realize things won't stay the same, but we want to preserve the very best of Fallston and Harford County for future generations. All these people who came out here tonight mostly want to voice their opposition to overdevelopment. We rely on you, our council members, to help us, to hear us, and act for us. I live in the Woodcrest community just off Mountain Road in Fallston. The traffic is horrendous. It's difficult and quite frankly scary to try to get out onto Mountain Road during rush hour. A new young driver was ahead of a neighbor of mine, and rightfully so, was being very careful to exit Stratford Road onto one-fifty-two. My neighbor sat for twenty-four minutes before the young driver could safely leave our neighborhood, and then he could proceed. There are numerous accidents. It has become unsafe. Any new development in this area would make an already serious traffic nightmare into an unsafe death trap. I ask you to consider, to please consider, the taxpaying homeowners and traffic before approving any new development in our beloved county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brianna Coleman, followed by Lauren Heiser.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
My name is Brianna Coleman. I live at twenty-three-forty-seven Engel Road in Fallston. I'm new here. This is my first county council meeting, and I'm wondering where I can get one of those blue hats, but in orange. First and foremost, I want to recognize your roles and express my appreciation for your time. However, the reason many of us are here is because we believe that some of you are not fulfilling your elected duties. Harford County is facing the consequences of past council decisions, and Fallston is suffering from a lack of representation on this council, as we have been for years with our previous council representatives. We're here to hold you accountable for as long as it takes to right the wrongs, and I'd like Mr. Pennman to do a better job for us because I know that he can. It's your duty to represent the citizens, which means your actions and decisions should be influenced by the people you represent and no one else. In Fallston, our elementary school that was built in two thousand and seventeen is already forty students beyond its capacity. There is a clear disconnect between the developmental process, planning process, and school enrollment projections. A hundred-and-eighty-eight acres of developable land in Harford County has been left out of school enrollment projection numbers. Do you think that's fair? We need to lower the adequate public facilities ordinance building moratorium to a hundred percent and accurately forecast enrollment to include mixed use and business zoning partials. It's time to prioritize our children over developers. Additionally, I'd like to draw attention to the Traffic Study Advisory Board. According to the county website, the board has not been updated or held a meeting since two thousand and twenty-one. And lastly, I believe Councilwoman Boyle Sodles owes our community an apology for her insensitivity regarding the recent murder on the Mon Pot Trail. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address.
Hi, I'm Lauren Heiser. My address is twenty-eighty-seven Stewart Drive in Fallston. And I'm addressing the council out of concern due to the number and size of large-scale residential developments that are approved, proposed, and being planned in our community. School capacity forecasting is almost a year behind when it is published each June. Projects and development representing hundreds of units are not included in forecasting until permits are issued. Even then, the applied pupil yield is wildly inaccurate, in particular in some school districts such as Fallston. The same figures are used across the entire county, and we can look to case studies in Fallston that showed the pupil yield is much higher in our community. At a minimum, updated school forecasting should be presented at DAC meetings when new projects are considered so that the impact to the schools can be addressed prior to the preliminary approvals. The adequate public facilities ordinance is not serving our county. Allowing a school to reach a hundred-and-ten percent capacity with additional permits already approved, no plans for expansion, redistricting, or new school construction in place before enacting a building moratorium and halting permits is completely irresponsible. Please consider lowering this to one hundred percent. This would still allow for slower, small-scale residential construction to take place, and our county can grow at a more reasonable rate. Furthermore, allowing municipalities to operate with different adequate public facility ordinances is not a reasonable expectation. If they're not funding school construction or expansion independently, they should also follow the county guidelines. Speaking of capital funding for new school construction, Harford County hired an outside firm to develop our school impact fees in two thousand and four. That firm, who I called, said that they should be reassessed every five years. It's been nineteen. In that time, construction costs have doubled. You look at construction cost inflation from two thousand and four to two thousand and twenty-three. Our fees were supposed to increase in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, but our council introduced emergency legislation to roll those fees back in two thousand and nine. So we still assess the same two thousand and four impact fees today. Benchmarking against other counties, Harford County is quite appealing to developers, and our students suffer as a consequence. For instance, the hundred-and-eighty-four apartment units being built in Hickory. This sends elementary students into a school that's already at capacity. In Harford County, we charge twelve-hundred dollars per unit in school impact fees. A new elementary school costs almost sixty million dollars. That's if we already own the land, which we don't in most cases. So twelve-hundred dollars times a hundred-and-eighty-four units equals two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-eight-hundred, and I'm almost out of time. But in Anne Rundle County, that same complex would generate two-point-two million for public schools, roads, and public safety. Frederick County, one-point-six million would go towards schools. Montgomery County, three-point-one million for the same-sized complex. PG County-
Heiser, please bring your comments till close.
-would charge three-point-six-five million for public schools.
Thank you, ma'am.
Beth Pajoli, followed by Katie Ganano.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Beth Pajoli, twenty-seven-forty Green Road, Baldwin, Maryland. Thank you for your time tonight. A few comments about the master land use process and future comprehensive zoning review. Locally, land use and zoning decisions are made by the county executive and the county council. These folks are elected every four years, most recently in two thousand and twenty-two. I suggest you, the citizens of Harford County, get to know all the council members, because the developers do.
Please, no reaction, please.
For some council members, the developer community will call, email, and meet frequently. Developers are in their ear, influencing decisions that impact us and often create legislation to amend the zoning code on their own behalf. In fact, zoning code changes approved by the county council over the years have enhanced the use of non-agricultural uses in agricultural properties, non-business uses in business zoning, and loopholes scattered throughout, making zoning a murky mess for the development community and their ancillary businesses. During the last master land use and comp zoning review back in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, I personally met with several members of the council to discuss the impacts of upzoning in Fallston. The only one still here is Mr. Vincenzi. I believe the two thousand and seventeen upzoning of over fifty-seven acres in Fallston, plus expansion of the development envelope at Route One and Route one-fifty-two in two thousand and sixteen, hurt efforts at restoration and possible revitalization of existing older areas in Harford County. Continued upzoning in rural communities near and outside the development envelope has a deflating effect on efforts of ag preservation. These actions send a message to the developer community that Harford County is open for business. As a consequence, agricultural landowners are potentially dissuaded from choosing ag land preservation, and the farms start to disappear. Changes do not happen overnight. Slowly, deliberately, and intentionally, the landscape changes. As Harford County begins the eight-year cycle of comprehensive rezoning requests, it is vital for this council to be very clear about its land use priorities. I respectfully request that this council listen to their constituents or risk sending a mixed message that will permit the slippery slope of sprawl. Thank you.
Thank you. Call your next speaker.
Katie Ganano, followed by Tim Van Emden.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Katie Ganano, thank you for getting that right. That's like one in three. Oh, right. Katie Ganano, twenty-three, twenty Franklin's Chance Court, Fallston, Maryland, two-ten-four-seven.
Can you step into that microphone, ma'am?
Yes, sorry. Normally, I'm outspoken, but I always get nervous. First ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the Harford County Council, thank you. I, sorry, I've like changed notes a lot. I would like to agree with my fellow Harford County residents about overdevelopment in terms of education, traffic, and infrastructure and ecosystem. Two of my three children are currently in Harford County public schools. My third grader and is a class of thirty-one. And as much as I do enjoy Harry Potter, I do not want my now-three-year-old to be attending kindergarten in a room closet in a couple of years. I wanted to talk some about Fallston and also Harford County in terms of our beautiful wetlands that serve as important habitats for a diverse range of plant and animal species. Point out our beloved crabs at the Chesapeake Bay. But they also perform an essential ecosystem services such as water filtration, flood control, and carbon sequestration. However, in recent years, we have witnessed an unsettling increase in land development projects that encroach upon these fragile ecosystems. The consequences of- The consequences of such actions are far-reaching and demand our immediate attention. I think it's often easy to dismiss environmental impact. Why? Because it's not as obvious or immediate as traffic or money made from proposed projects. It can take months, years, or decades to feel the true impact. The destruction of wetlands through overdevelopment leads to a loss of invaluable biodiversity. These habitats provide shelter, food, breeding grounds for a vast array of species, many are which unique and rare. I want to bring up crabs again. I really do like and enjoy them. By diminishing the wetlands, we are not only endangering the survival of these species, but also disrupting the intricate web of life that sustains our ecosystem as a whole, not only in Foston, but in Harford County. Overdeveloping near wetlands can also have adverse effects on our water quality. Wetlands act as natural filters, removing pollutants and sediments from water before it enters our rivers and streams. I don't know about you, but I don't like dirty drinking water. By encroaching upon these areas, we risk compromising the purity of our water sources, which is crucial for both human consumption and the health of our aquatic ecosystems, i.e. the Chesapeake Bay. Lastly, it is imperative that we take a stand against the overdevelopment land adjacent wetlands, not only in Foston, again, but in Harford County, Maryland. We must prioritize the preservation of these fragile ecosystems, recognize their immense value to our community and the broader environment. I think we need to get together and raise awareness and advocate protections of our wetlands before we go ahead and pour more concrete. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name and address.
Evening, Council President. My name is Tim Van Emden. I live at 1963 Mitchell Drive, Hudson, Perryman. Hans Londo's quote is saying, "I love rumors. Facts are often misleading. Rumors, whether true or false, can often be revealing." So let's talk about some rumors of some shady stuff, shall we say, going on within this council.
Careful now, Tim.
I understand, sir.
With all due respect, careful.
I understand, sir.
Okay.
I'm just asking questions and-
You didn't answer a question.
I understand. Does anyone on this council work? And by work, I mean employ W-2, 1099, third-party consulting, or anything else for any other member of this council?
Tim, nobody's going to answer that question or any other question, as you know. You've been here enough times to know this is our time. This is our time to listen to you.
I'm not expecting-
So if you have something to say, we're here to listen.
I'm not expecting an answer immediately, but I would like you to address it at the end with your comments as, you know, you've been kind enough to allow us to speak so that you can respond, and I do appreciate that, sir. I'd really like to hear that answer. Fortunately, and Mr. Pemben, this one is kind of pointed directly at you, and I really do hope this is true. That's why I'm bringing this here, and I would like your answer to this. There is a rumor circulating about you, sir, that you plan to go back to the Harford County Sheriff's Office while maintaining your seat, even though that is in clear violation of Harford Charter 207.
Tim.
Sir?
Have you got something other than rumors to speak to us about?
This is my time to speak, sir.
It is your time to speak, but I'm not going to let you stand there and bring accusations against this council in any shape or form. I'm going to ask you one more time to be respectful, make your comments, and then after that, we'll go somewhere else.
Have a good night, sir, since you clearly don't wish to answer my questions.
Thank you, sir.
Ken Shannon, followed by Sandra Magnus.
Good evening, sir. Name and address.
Good evening, Council. President and Council. Ken Shannon, 2044 Park Beach Drive in Perryman. I've lived in Perryman for twenty years. During that time, there's been a continual increase in industrial development and associated traffic, with a considerable acceleration over the last few years. Since the time that I bought my house in Perryman, there's been a tenfold increase in the size of industrial development in Perryman. All this industrial development comes with increased traffic, particularly tractor-trailer traffic. But with all that increase in traffic, the only significant change to the roads in Perryman is a circle at the intersection of Perryman Road and Old Philadelphia Road. So a tenfold increase in the size of industrial development in Perryman, but all this increase in truck traffic volume is running on the same roads. The Wall Street Journal ran an article in January of last year on the negative impacts of trucks on America's roads. It described the equivalent single axle load, or EASL, factor, which is the damage a vehicle will inflict on pavement by driving over it. The article showed that the damage from a single axle load of a typical tractor-trailer is equivalent to the damage of 5,000 passenger cars. State and federal transportation agencies estimate that trucks are responsible for thirty-five to forty percent of highway maintenance costs, even though they account for less than ten percent of the miles driven. There are longstanding plans to finish Woodley Road in Perryman, but that has been stalled for years. In the meantime, the county needs to consider legislation that could control the volume of truck traffic in Perryman to protect existing roads from the destructive impact of massive tractor-trailers, but more importantly, protect the people of Perryman from the threats to their safety that comes from the constant increase in tractor-trailer traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Sandy Magnus, 2010 White House Road, Bel Air. I'd like to address a couple of things with the council. I have sat in this council office and listened to tons of legislative meetings, and I've commented. I'm just asking that this council be transparent. I've sat in this whole area where, when questions have been asked, that certain people, even department heads, have said, "Well, we have to defer to someone across the road." So in other words, they've got to get their answers from the administration. I want to see a little bit more transparency with all of you, regardless of what area you're representing. We have a lot of problems in Harford County right now. We've had the murder on the Maun Paul. I've listened to people talk about the new apartment complexes going in Hickory. I pass by them every day. The ones across diagonal from Rofo, we had a hire for murder there. So I'm not saying that it's going to come in no matter where you are, but at the same point in time, we need to resolve our issues before we do any more developing in this county. I look at Route One, 22, 152, 136, and 543. With all of the development that has been done, our infrastructure is not working. It has not been improved. We, and I've heard a lot of people talk about the farming community. I am part of that farming community. Transporting animals to a butcher shop, trying to get through the traffic, is a nightmare. And we have to pick and choose our times when we leave the farm and when we come home just because of the traffic and the traffic alone. Today, I was notified by another teacher that the Teachers Academy that is being done currently at the VOTAC School. The kids that are in that program now, which is referred to as T-A-M, the Teachers Academy of Maryland, they are now going, those kids will graduate, but starting this coming year, applications are going to only be done for Edgewood and North Harford because they are moving that program from VOTAC. They moved our animal science program from VOTAC to allow the TMA to come in, the TAM program to come in. So what is going on with VOTAC? I'm listening to more and more kids in this community that are wanting to get into those trades, and they can't get in, but VOTAC has not grown. We haven't added to it. We haven't supplemented it.
Sandy, please bring your comments to a close. That's a conversation we need to have at another time, though.
Thank you, and I appreciate it, but I'm just asking transparency, please.
Thank you, Sandy.
Tammy Wainwright, followed by Rebecca Gardner.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Tammy Wainwright, 11th Basucha Road. For centuries, minorities, immigrants, and the poor have been forced to sit back and watch mostly male, mostly white, and mostly professionals make decisions on where they could live, work, educate, worship, and play. And for centuries, they have had their quality of life destroyed due to racist policies camouflaged as enterprise zones and economic development. Environmental racism is described as institutional rules, regulations, policies, or government and/or corporate decisions that deliberately target immigrant, poor, and minority communities, which are already overburdened and underserved. This results in disproportionate exposure to unsafe drinking water, elevated air pollution, and health issues. The environmental injustice that has been perpetrated upon the Perryman community is shameful. There is no excuse for the continual apathy or disregard for our well-being. According to Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Executive Order 12,898, we have the right to basic elements of a peaceful, pollutant-free existence: clean drinking water and fresh air. I implore you to think of the generations behind us. How will we ensure their quality of life? What will your legacy to the county and community be? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Rebecca Gardner, 3145 East Nobles Mill Road, Darlington. Have you all received the pamphlet that I gave the lovely woman in the polka dot dress who said that you would each get one? So I'm sympathetic to what has gone before. I'm here to encourage you to pass a resolution to endorse the back-from-the-brink considerations to diminish the likelihood of our all disappearing or being named by a nuclear bomb. The danger of nuclear war is real and growing. Geopolitical instability is increasing, and global tensions are rising. The U.S. and other nuclear armed states are in the midst of a new arms race, diverting resources that could instead help to confront many of the social and economic and infrastructure concerns that have been mentioned tonight. Nuclear weapons do not keep us safe, it can be argued. They are one of the greatest threats to our security. Current policies are bringing us to the brink of a catastrophe that threatens all of humanity. And I'm here to encourage this fine council to please pass a resolution to endorse this back-from-the-brink which advocates for actively pursuing a verifiable agreement among nuclear armed states to eliminate their nuclear arsenals. Number two, renouncing the option of using nuclear weapons first. Three, ending the sole unchecked authority of any U.S. president to launch a nuclear attack. Four, taking U.S. nuclear weapons off hair-trigger alert, thus decreasing the likelihood of a nuclear explosion and war due to instrument or human error. And five, canceling the plan to replace the entire U.S. nuclear arsenal with enhanced weapons. I ask that you please read this and consider endorsing this as the seventy-plus municipalities in the United States already have and as the over four hundred faith-based environmental organizations have also endorsed it. We need to take steps to protect ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dale Livingston, followed by Lee Maddox.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Dale Livingston. I live at 1908 Angleside Road in Foston. Good evening, and thank you for letting us speak. As you've heard and have heard many times prior to this meeting, the people of Harford County are being used and abused by our elected and appointed officials. The people of Harford County are tired of our tax dollars being misused by our elected officials. The people of Harford County are tired of our elected officials thinking they can do whatever they want with no responsibility to the people they hurt and not having to face ramifications for their behavior. Well, I'm here to tell you now that that thinking is wrong on your part, if that's what you think. The following is a paraphrase of the preamble to our beautiful United States Constitution. "We, the people of Harford County, in order to reform our once-perfect union, want to reestablish justice, reenable domestic tranquility, continue to provide for the common defense, re-promote the general welfare, and re-severe the blessings and liberty to ourselves and our posterity. We, the people of Harford County, do proclaim and will reestablish our United States Constitution for the people of Harford County. We, the people of Harford County, will no longer stand for the destruction of our county and its community, the blatant disregard for our safety, the feeble excuses that there's nothing that can be done, the assault on our county's beautiful environment, the callous disregard for our children as our representatives allow educators to rob them of their innocence and pure hearts. The indifference our representatives show when people they work for, we, the people, come to speak, express concerns, and ask for help. We, the people of Harford County, will no longer stand for seemingly uninterested agencies, both county and state, that would rather follow the illegal mandates of woke state leaders rather than following our Constitution, which you all swore to uphold. We, the people of Harford County, will stand together, united, in the pursuit of our God-given rights of property, freedom, and liberty, which do not come from you. You were granted your seats on this council because of us, we, the people. You would not be there if not for us, and just as we voted to put you in those seats, we will vote to take you out of those seats. Thank you."
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Lee Maddox, 1700 Church Point Court, Perryman. Water, water everywhere, not a drop to drink. For the past eighteen months, people from my community in Perryman have been raising concerns about Harford's drinking water supply and the Bush River watershed. All the studies in this area are grossly out of date. About a year ago, I had a conversation in the community with an employee from the Harford County Department of Public Works. The topic of water quality came up, and the employee stated to me, "You don't want to know." The comment was a bit alarming because we really do want to know, and in fact, we need to know. We have asked our councilman Jacob Bennett to write the governor for help on this issue. We have also reached out to the Maryland Department of the Environment and the Harford County Health Department. To date, no one has been able to provide estimates as to when these important public health and environmental studies will be replicated. In fact, at the town hall 3P held just last week, thank you, Mr. Vincenti and Mr. Bennett, for attending. Bob Casely fielded a question about the water studies and noted the water studies had not been updated because of the exorbitant amount of time the studies would take to complete. We know the groundwater at APG has been contaminated with forever chemicals. We know they have attempted mitigation by closing some wells. We also know there are concerns that the forever chemicals could migrate to the nearby Perryman wellfields, which provide 30% of the drinking water to Harford County and to all of you in this room. The reluctance of our leadership to invest time on this issue is deeply troubling. There are grant monies available by the EPA and other environmental groups to study and mitigate any contamination. We have a lot of people in Perryman who get their drinking water from private wells. We also have a whole industry who depend on the health of the Bush River for their livelihood, not to mention the people who consume the seafood. We need to be careful not to take a fatalistic approach when it comes to drinking water and the health of our rivers. We need to know how bad things are so we can take steps to make things better. Please help us in requesting a current Perryman wellfield study, a new Bush River watershed management plan, and a new Bush River watershed characterization study. Thank you very much for your time, and great love to Fallston. Keep coming back.
Thank you, Lee.
Frank Winter, followed by Matt Chandler.
Call your speaker again?
Frank Winter, followed by Matt Chandler.
Matt? Good evening, sir. Name and address, please?
Sure. Matt Chandler, 841 Ripple Stream Court in Joppa, Maryland. I grew up in Harford County. I rode my bike on 152 to my first job at Acme. That sounds crazy, doesn't it? That was 29 years ago. I went to Fallston schools. I have three kids, all in Fallston schools, one in Use Benefit, one in Fallston Middle, and one in Fallston High School. They all play Fallston sports, including JV volleyball, travel soccer, travel baseball, and rec soccer. I've been volunteering at YBS for several years and several times a month, including tomorrow with the second grade team. I'm a PTA member where I got this awesome orange shirt. I consider myself a deep part of this community, and I love it. Last month, I spoke to the community and others about my concerns for the future of Fallston with the high and medium density development with a focus on traffic. I mentioned that I was concerned by both witnessing and hearing of major accidents in our main corridor on 152. This past Thursday at 9:55, I was coming back from a doctor's appointment, traveling north on 152 towards the Harvest Fair Shopping Center, and there was a major car accident right in front of me where my car was almost totaled. A car sideswiped an SUV both traveling at significant speeds. The SUV went up on two wheels, headed toward me on incoming traffic, slammed on its side, and continued directly towards me as I headed off the road. I saw the person thrown about in the SUV and the airbags deploy. I called 911 and was transferred to the Maryland State Police, who did not answer the call. 911 came back a few minutes later after listening to the ringing and asked me to call back later, but that someone would probably be there. I wish I could tell you this was an isolated incident. It's not. Our community can't continue to develop with reckless abandon. Our infrastructure can't handle the increased load, and it seems like even our emergency communications are sometimes struggling to keep up. On August 11th, I spoke to the community and other members about my concerns for the future of Fallston with high and medium density development with a focus on schools. As I mentioned, I have three kids in Fallston schools, and I stayed here for them. Use Benefit was built just a few years ago and is already over capacity. So is Red Pump. So is him, Sedwick Field, right down the road from here, but that's another story. All schools that are either currently did or do feed into Fallston, this is probably well-known. But what's not well-known is Use Benefit is turning a storage closet and teacher planning room into a kindergarten classroom and other non-classrooms suffering the same feat. In 2020, HCPS capacity enrollment data estimated at 1,103 children in enrollment for YBS for 2023. Well, it's 2023, and guess what? That number is 1,140. That's one and a half classrooms worth of children that were never accounted for. No wonder we're turning to these unconventional rooms into classrooms. What's going to happen in the next three years when another one and a half classrooms are needed? Where are they going to come from? I don't know. Are we going to move kids from 104% capacity to 115% capacity? Because that's kind of where we are. Our community can't handle this continued development with reckless abandon. Our schools can't handle the increased load, and our children shouldn't suffer in order to serve our developer overlords. I'm not against progress. I'm against irresponsible and short-sighted development so someone can make a few dollars or a few million dollars. I don't know how all this development in the last few years has allowed to happen and seemingly gone unchecked. Perhaps all the upzoning that has happened over the last so many years, maybe it's the relationship with developers. I don't know. But what I do know is that this community can't continue to develop in this way, and the residents are fed on it.
Mr. Chandler, please bring your comments to a close.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Chandler, are you going to be here after the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Okay. There are a couple of things that we heard tonight are very concerning to me, for sure, and will be addressed tomorrow. With that, we'll go into Agenda Number 16, business from council members. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you all for bringing a lot of those good comments before us. I'd like to comment on one because it's something near and dear to my heart from when I was on the council before, when you're talking about the APFO. I don't know, there are a lot of Fallston people here. I don't know if you remember, in the early 2000s, the APFO was 120%. Do you remember that? It was 120%, and you know, the problem with that, whatever the percent is, the problem with it is that the builders are building, and around that time, we were building about 2,000 homes a year, which is really a lot. But the problem when you have something at 110% or whatever the number, then 120%, that the builders are putting their homes in the pipeline, and the number's going up, you know, 112, 115, 118, it's getting close to 120. When they see it getting there, then they pop in a whole bunch just before it reaches 120, because they're, when they put the homes into the pipeline to be built, they're on, they have a two-year wait where they can build, even though now it crossed 120% because they built all the other ones, and they're building them, so the 120 goes to 128, 130, 140. And at the time, and God bless Ronnie Channell, who's sitting right here alongside me, him and I, her and I battled right and left because my very first bill, when I got on the council in 2020, 2002, was to reduce the 120% APFO to 100. Well, Harkins was across the street, and he blew his mind. He was so ticked off at that bill, he wrote a letter to the editor at the time when we really had an EJIS, when he got one to more. But it used to be, remember in the middle of the paper, we used to get both sides? And we could do, people could do letters to the editor, the whole thing. Well, Harkins wrote a letter to the editor against that bill, and he took up the entire page. And I have a copy of it. I can show it to you. And I said, "Okay, he did that. Well, guess what? I'm going to write a letter back to it." And I took up the entire page, and they put it in there. What happened, the builders and all were beating up Harkins over this bill because they knew if this bill gets passed, they're now going to be locked out of building any more homes, you know, until that percentage rate goes down. So my bill went in at 100, and there was battles for months and months over this bill. And we eventually settled for 105% with a sunset clause to 110. So that's how it got to 110 right now. And it looks like we need to readdress that all over. Because what happened was, when that passed, when that dropped from 120 to 105%, 18 building districts in this county were shut down. They shut down. They couldn't take any more building. Nobody could submit any more building projects and all into those 18 school districts. So what it forced, what it did, was it forced the county to look at some other way to handle that situation. Well, the only way, and then Harkins went out and Craig came in. He didn't like the bill either. But what happened, the pressure got put on the administration to build more schools and bigger ones. And if you recall, we tore down Blair High School, built a bigger one. We built a brand-new Patterson Mill Middle High School, you know, to take care of the extra. We built a brand-new Edgewood High School, a bigger one. And we built Deerfield Elementary. We added more on to Aberdeen High School. And the last thing that went in was the Havity Grace Middle High School that they built that was, well, that was over $100 million. Unfortunately, we didn't get to Joppa Town before I left office in 2014, where Craig had told me that they were going to build a brand-new Joppa Town High School and make it a middle high school, and then take Magnolia Middle School and turn that into a VOTech school. That was going to be our VOTech school, which is perfect. Right between Joppa Town and Edgewood was a perfect place to have a VOTech school because they also have an indoor swimming pool. Only two schools in the whole county that have that. So maybe we need to readdress that. I'm going to talk to Pat Vicente about it because he's on the committee, the APFO committee. Maybe we needed to readdress that and get it from 110 to 100, back to 100. It never got to 100 because, well, let me, let me tell you one more story. If you from Fallston all remember, you used to have meetings at the Fallston High School. Remember that? Well, I remember Ronnie is here, and she had her cane, and she beat on this table, if you remember that. "I will never vote to lower the APFO if I live here to be 100." And she beat on the table. Well, I said, "The only way to get her on board was I came to your meetings at the Fallston High School, and I told you all this, what I just said." And Ronnie, I said, "Ronnie is against that bill." I said, "And you need to convince her to vote for it." Because then you came here like this, and you got up on that microphone, and you told her she has to support my bill. So finally, when we got around to voting for the bill, what did she do? Yes, she voted for it. So that's some of the history. I guess we could take a look at it again. Just a couple of comments. The Southern County Task Force is going to have a meeting at 6:00 PM on this Thursday, September 7th, at the Edgewood Community Center. I want to thank the county executive for creating the Southern County Task Force. Unfortunately, the southern part of the county has been looked over for a number of years. For some reason, we can't seem to get hardly any money pushed in that area, but I'm hoping that with this task force and all that the county executive has created, that things will improve. And I'm seeing some improvements as we speak. On August 24th, I went to the Boys and Girls Club. They had a graduation ceremony for some of their students there, some of their computer students. And certainly, I was proud to be there. The other big project we have in our district is the copper mine company that are building eight sports fields right there by the Boys and Girls Club. You think about eight sports fields. You say it first, it don't sound like very big, but you take eight sports fields, just take a football field. Look how big a football field is. While they're building an eight sports field, they're all turf. They're all going to be lit up. They're going to have day and night sports there. They're going to have bathrooms. They're going to have food and everything else there. We've met, myself and Pat and Bob Casely. We've met with the CEO of that copper mine. He's a very nice guy, very cooperative. He predicts that, and he's got several of these sports complexes around the state. He predicts that when that gets in operation, and it looks like, I was just over there the other day, they're really moving along pretty good. If you get over that area, over there by the Edgewood Boys and Girls Club, take a look, you'll see what I'm talking about. They expect to be open early next year and start their sports program. And he says, this is his quote, he says, "When they get gone full operation, that they expect anywhere from about 6,000 people on a Saturday and 6,000 people on a Sunday." And usually, they'll come in Friday and stay till Sunday. So the hotels are going to really pick up big time. And I hope to get some of that hotel tax spent in our area.
Time to move on.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Pedman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you all for being here. Your comments tonight and your comments at the multiple events that I've attended in Fallston are heard. I'll talk about that here in a moment. But it is exciting to be back in legislative session. District B office has been working on several initiatives, some of which have been introduced here this evening. One particular initiative we've been working on prior to the summer session, myself and Councilman Guthrie and Councilwoman Jessica Bolusodals met with Dr. Bolson and his staff members to discuss some of the inappropriate materials that are in the school libraries. Dr. Bolson and his staff were receptive to forming a committee to discuss a standard or a policy for appropriate materials. So that committee has been formed. We've met a few times. It consists of myself, representing the council, along with a board of ed member and some members of the school staff, as well as parents. So I look forward to bringing you a solution, a policy, to review materials that are in the school libraries. Keep in mind, the school library should be curriculum-based. The public library is a different story. Regarding the proposed apartments that are projected for 317 Mountain Road tomorrow, the work group will meet and discuss the alternative ideas for that particular property. There are some people here in the chambers this evening that are going to be a part of that work group, along with subject matter experts or experienced members of society with several different disciplines, whether it's planning and zoning, economic development, environmental aspects, as well as Wade Sewell from the school board. So we're going to meet, try to discuss different alternative measures or ideas for that piece of property. And then following that, we're going to meet with the property owner, the developer, to discuss those ideas with him. He has said that he's open to different ideas, so we're hoping to bring them to him. I'm optimistic on that, that hopefully we can produce some change. But a report will be coming back from that soon after. And the last thing I want to touch on, I was approached by the Fallston Swim Club in the spring about introducing legislation for nonprofit tax exemption swim clubs. There's about four major swim clubs in the county, Fallston being the largest. You have Fountain Green, you have Aberdeen, and you have North Harford. I think there's one in Havity Grace. It's two, so there's four of them there. So we're working on legislation to possibly introduce that, to have a tax exemption for nonprofit swim clubs. So with that, I hope to have a follow-up with you next week. Thank you. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pedman. Mr. Janter-Danner?
Thank you, Council President. Deion, I just want to correct you. It's Bel Air, not Blair. One of these days, you're going to learn, and I'm going to remind you. So that's all.
You mean like Baltimore?
So just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Look forward to a public hearing on Monday in October to go over everything. So it's been a busy summer, worked on a bunch of different things, but a lot of grand openings, some Baco Pizza, Shamrock Park, Dick's Sporting Goods. Unfortunately, I've heard from a lot of people, they took away the guns and the ammo there. People aren't happy about that. So, but Green Drop also opened up, and basically, I'm going to keep it short. So thank you, Council President. Look forward to legislative session. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Janter-Danner. Mr. Riley?
Yes, I want to welcome everybody back. Congratulations to our newest Eagle Scouts, Nicholas Chaney and Justin Davis in Troop 265 at Jarrettsville. I hope everyone had an enjoyable summer. I wish the teachers and all the students a great year. I would just say to the Fallston residents, appreciate you coming here tonight, but Perryman's been here for a year and a half, and you've got a long road ahead of you. So I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Sodals?
Thank you, everyone. I would like to also thank you all for coming and giving your input. It really does mean a lot. I was able to have a productive summer. I met with some of my fellow council members, as well as the sheriff, council president. So I'd like to thank all of you for working with me over the summer, and I look forward to a productive season. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodals. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Council President. First, I just want to recognize Ms.
First, I just want to recognize Ms. Gertrude Hawkins, who's turning one hundred and four years old on September 15th. For those of you good with math, that's over forty percent of Harford County's history in one person, which is just incredible. You know, it's personally exciting for me, because this year would have been my grandfather's one hundred and tenth birthday, and so just thinking, I'm very young, but I have very old grandparents, in case anybody was trying to figure out how I have a one hundred and ten-year-old grandpa. But, you know, Harford County history is just something that means a lot to me, my family personally, but I know to the community at large, and I can't wait to help celebrate her. She's going to be added to the county plaque and presented a proclamation later this month to celebrate her. It has been a busy summer. I've been working nearly every day with a lot of people who are in this room, and that work is coming to fruition in the coming weeks. For those of you who want to be up to date on what I'm doing each month, we send out a bi-monthly newsletter. You can sign up for that just by emailing me and giving me your email address, and I'll add you to the list. There's also a link on my website. It was the first day of school last week, which as an educator and as the husband of an educator, I just want to thank all the people, all the workers in our county, from facilities to our custodial crews, to our administrators and our educators who put in the work to get the school year started. I know personally, being at school past midnight, getting my classroom ready for my kindergarteners, just what a sacrifice it takes in order to provide for our community. And, you know, serving our community is always, and each action I take, what is the first point of mind. You know, and then I, somebody did tonight speak about the rudders coming to the city of Aberdeen, and I just want to share, you know, on that issue and on the issue of Old Philadelphia Road and many others, I have been in communication with the city council president. I've met in their city council chambers with them, and I've exchanged emails, so I'm aware of those issues and building communication on those issues. So it's not something that is slipping past my attention as the representative for the community of Perryman. With that being said, we have a lot of work in the next few weeks, and I just encourage you to continue to email, to ask for phone calls, to ask for meetings in person. You know, coming here and speaking is not the end of the road for communication, so it's very important to take those follow-up steps, because it really does make an impact on the way that we vote and the way we amend bills. That communication matters a whole lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, and you're absolutely correct. This is your chamber. This is your place to come in the county, to be able to speak to any of your issues or concerns, and we welcome that. And the only thing that we ask that when you come is that you're respectful, not only to each other, but to this council as well. We're here to listen to you. I'm going to have to reach out to Mr. Vananet after this meeting tonight, because I want him to understand, we want to listen to facts, not rumors, facts. And as you can see with all the council members, we continue to work on legislation and matters, even while we were supposed to be on break, if you will. Every day, we worked on legislation that we promised you that we would bring back first meeting, and we've done that. We've listened to the citizens. We've had an opportunity to listen to several different issues that we have in front of us, and I do believe that the fact, the way the bill was handled originally allowed this to move forward, allowed all of you to come forward and speak your mind, and for us to listen. And I do believe that's a positive thing. We have continued to work on issues throughout the county with health department issues, worked with our department heads to handle any type of issues that were in our prospective districts, or respective districts. I too want to recognize one of Harford County's newest centric club members, which is Clay Ketchmar, and she's one hundred and one right now, I believe. And got to visit her house, present her with the recognition, and listen to some of her stories, which were absolutely amazing. We had an opportunity to recognize several of our county employees that were retiring, both health department and department heads over here, Eric Willem and John Wise from the Harford County Health Department, Jim Ceruto from Facilities, and Vernon Yingling last week from Procurement. And we want to thank them for their service that they provided the citizens for all the years they're here. I believe some of the health department people were here for forty years. We've attended many community events across the county, from the farm fair, the National Night Out, the leading-edge training facilities completion ceremony, which is absolutely amazing, because I remember when we went in there, and they had their first simulator set up, and everyone was working on that. And I forget, Ms. Harris, do you remember how many people they recognized that night? How many people graduated with certificates? Must have been fifty. I'm going to just say in the fifty number. We took an ag tour with the Harford Soil Conservation Department, visited several sites across the county. It was very eye-opening to many of our council members. They hadn't had a chance to do some of these tours, so that was good. And as Tony and others mentioned, ribbon cuttings and, you know, different things across the county, Eagle Scout Courts of Honor. So we continue to be busy. Tonight, though, I'm really concerned about a couple of the comments that were made in reference to our EMS partners here in the county, and I know Mr. Richardson will be with us every meeting from now. Well, I don't want to say every, but our meetings moving forward, he will take these concerns directly to the county executive first thing in the morning, and we are going to follow up with our EMS up at the AOC to check these dates out. Mr. Chandler, are you still here? And we will absolutely follow up on that. So again, I want to thank you for your patience here this evening, and look forward to seeing you again on October the second for the public hearing. And again, we know this is an issue, serious issue, for many people, and we are taking it seriously, and that's why we set a one night aside to be able to listen to all of your comments and hopefully not cut any of the timeouts. So with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.